Soon as I hit the record. It is now seven, seven o'clock, October seventh, two thousand twenty-four, uh, two thousand twenty-five. This is the Arundel Planning Board. We are in the municipal meeting and I will start with a roll call from the far end.
I am Charles Tettelman, town contracted planner with North Star Planning, uh, senior player with North Star Planning.
Uh, Sam Pike is with North Star Planning.
Michael.
Scott Curtis.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong, I'm the chair. Temporarily. Uh, we have on the agenda tonight, approval of the agenda, approval of minutes of September sixteenth. We have time for a public comment. We have a public hearing on for Southern Maine Marine, a site plan review application. And then we have pending business, you know, site, Southern Maine, uh, site plan review. And under new business, we have Branch Brook Fuels, and then we have other business, and then we're all going home. Yeah, that's how I feel about it. Let's all go home. Yeah.
Uh, I believe the site plan application, uh, this, the first one has been pulled, uh, from the KPT Marina, like KPT Marina, is that correct? Look to you two real quick, um.
Uh, no, we, the only, uh, item that we requested to have removed was we had submitted an application for clearing.
Yeah.
Uh, on the property. And so at this point, we're just here for.
Right.
Uh, for the current plan that the board has already, uh, yeah, that's just for the marine edition. We'll come back for the other phase.
Yeah, I just don't, I think that was decided after the agenda. So I just want to clarify that the top.
Yeah, I don't think she, I don't think it made it to the agenda.
Cool. Just wanted to make sure.
All the board.
Sweet.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I mean, I want to say we knew at some point.
No, we got the plan, but it was never formally introduced to us.
Right, be- be- because it got pulled in and just went, nope, when, what, you're not going to have it now. And okay. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the agenda?
Second, second, Ben.
Motion by, uh, Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of September sixteenth.
And we have to approve the sidewalk too, correct?
There's, there's two sets. There's the sidewalk and the, uh, actual meeting.
And for the, for the sake of the new members, if you were not on the sidewalk or at the meeting, just abstain from the vote.
I move that we accept the minutes as written for September sixteenth.
The sidewalk or the?
No, the minutes.
The minutes, okay. Is there a second?
You weren't here, right?
I wasn't.
I'll, uh, second that.
Okay. Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Paul Green to accept the minutes of September sixteenth. Any discussion?
I'll need to abstain.
Yeah. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just the three of us.
Right, three in favor and three abstentions.
Correct.
And for the sidewalk. I'll make a motion. We accept the sidewalk minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Rich Canong, seconded by Paul Green to accept the sidewalk minutes. Any discussion, Paul?
Oh, sir.
I've got none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Two of us, and it is unanimous.
Phenomenal.
And Susan Roth and Tom McGinn are abstaining. And on to the next item, public comment. This is that time of night, if there's somebody from the public who has a comment about something that's not on the agenda. But since I see everybody here has something that's on the agenda. Then there's no reason to continue with the public comment, then we will move right along. Public hearing. It's seven oh five. Southern Maine Marine Site Plan Review Application, a proposal to construct a five thousand square foot addition to an existing office retail building. The addition will contain three marine repair maintenance space with overhead doors for trucks and trailer access. There will not be an increase in impervious surface or parking spaces, but the existing employee spaces will be relocated on site. The property owner is KPT Marine LLC DBA Southern Maine Marine. Lena Toby, P E of Walsh Engineering Associates is the project manager. The parcel is located at twenty-four sixty-one Portland Road on tax map twelve lot four-two in the Business Industrial Zone. And I would venture to say that since there's nobody here from the public, unless this fine gentleman has questions. It, in that case, it's seven oh six, I will close the public hearing. We're not allowed to talk during the public hearing. That's all for the public only. And now you guys can step up and we can talk with you.
Oh, no, you can take that one.
We have to get a better microphone for that table.
Yeah.
I don't know why they don't have one of these over there.
Well, we should ask.
Good evening, board. Uh, for the record, my name is Warner Gilliam. I'm with Walsh Engineering Associates, uh, and joining me this evening, uh, is, uh, Sean.
Dumas.
Dumas, thank you. Sorry, Sean.
Uh.
Southern Maine Marine, uh, you know, representing, uh, you know, this, the project that has been before you a number of times now, and that's for a five thousand square foot addition at the existing uh, retail and, uh, shop building that's located on site. Uh, happy to answer any questions, uh, you know, that the board, uh, they have, our staff, uh, as you'll, uh, may recall, we were fortunate, uh, that we had fire chief, uh, available at, uh, at one of our previous meetings, uh, where we discussed a number of items, uh, with the chief. Uh, that, uh, that were to his satisfaction, uh, we discussed another, uh, number of other items on our sidewalk, uh, and notably a couple of other items that, uh, that I saw in the findings, uh, that I believe will be conditions for us, uh, which we're happy to deal with. Uh, notably, uh, items that were, uh, noted as conditional, uh, were, were to produce a landscaping plan, which, as we've discussed, since this is our first phase of a larger project, we'll be coming back to the board, uh, with a, you know, with a more comprehensive landscape plan for the site overall. Uh, and, uh, also understand that, uh, that, uh, we'll need to work through, uh, some of the financial performance, uh, guarantee details with staff, uh, once we've gotten through the planning board process, which we're, we're happy to do.
Okay, that will be a condition of the approval. And before you're able to get a permit to move a rock, we'll have to have that.
Yep.
Performance guarantee on.
Yep, absolutely.
And the, the good news about that is that it's just like the, the local landscape moves stuff around. It doesn't deal with anything related to the building at all.
Yeah.
No foundations, no digging, the whole. It's just this, it's just the basic, uh, groundwork on the site.
Yep.
Said, I have no idea what that's going to cost.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
Relatively minimal, uh, you know, in, in the grand scheme of, you know, in the grand scheme of the project, we have some drainage improvements, uh, you know, that are, you know, that are part of the design. Uh, but, you know, beyond that, and just some, you know, general improvements to the, you know, to the surrounding, uh, parking areas, uh, that's really the, the extent of, you know, the site work. Again, most of that's just going to be, you know, the drainage improvements that are, you know, that have been specked out. Everything else is building.
Any questions from the board?
No, I have none. They answered all their questions during the sidewalk as far as the landscaping and stuff. I'm satisfied with what they did and as long as it's one of the, uh, performance uh, conditions, I'm fine.
I do, I do have one question. You have water out there, don't you?
That's correct. Yes, we have municipal water.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, because I know, I noticed one of the conditions. Uh, you have to submit documentation for, uh, demonstrating that the proposed use has adequate public water. But you have public water.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
I, you know, just as, as a note, I, I have reached out to, uh, to the Water District, uh, and, you know, we'll be, we, we can provide certainly that ability to cert letter and any of the, and any other details that staff.
I think a letter from them would be sufficient.
Yep. Yep.
There is a hydrant on the lot next door too. It's probably eight feet from the property line. So there's, you know.
Is it, is it on your side or is it on the other side?
On the Gary Martin property.
Oh, yeah.
The next, it's between his driveway and ours, I'd say a decently distant.
Perfect.
So, so, you know, that that should help matters in terms of that, so. We're not at the end of a one-inch hole with towns of.
Actually, is, is that the concern with the water supply was the firefighting?
No.
So, so I do have a question being like, I guess, why, why is that a question on a garage? They're not going to be doing a car wash.
It's, uh, one of your, the site plan standards. So it's a site plan standard that simply just needs to be met. And I know that it's a minimal addition, uh, but it's a requirement of the ordinance. Um, and if it was a more of a concern, I don't think we would condition it. Um, but because there's not anticipated use or anything, it's just getting that approval, um, from the Water District.
Okay. And again, next.
Sure, I understand.
Very minor, yeah.
That'll, that's a letter.
Well, like, there's going to be a high wall.
It's, it's really just a couple of emails is effectively for, uh.
That's, that's the same kind of thing with, we did with the fire chief. We need a letter that says yes.
Okay, yep. Thanks for that. I want to do stuff tonight.
Well, folks, what is your pleasure? We've deemed the application complete. We've held a public hearing.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the application?
I'll second that.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Roth to approve the application. Now for the fun part of it. Town of Arundel Planning Board, findings of fact and conclusions of law. Site plan application, KPT Marine LLC DBA Southern Maine Marine twenty-four sixty-one Portland Road. The background, KPT Marine LLC, doing business as Southern Maine Marine, submitted a site plan application for a five thousand square foot building expansion to the existing office retail building located at twenty-four sixty-one Portland Road. The proposed building expansion includes three loading bays. The property parcel is at tax map twelve block zero zero four lot zero zero two and is located within the B, the Business Office Park Industrial District. Currently, the five point zero five acre property contains two warehouse buildings, a workshop building, a partially paved driveway, work yard, and two above ground. Do you have above ground propane tanks?
Correct, yes. Uh.
I, I don't think I noticed them.
They were right behind, uh, between the store and Gary Martin's property. There was one tucked in there.
Okay.
That would be moved further down.
Yeah.
And the other one was in the driveway, right as you came in, in front of that older workshop. It's already there. But center.
I've been there too often. It, I, it, you don't, you start not noticing things.
I do want to just, uh, make note on, on one item on the description. So we actually have four doors across the front of the building. I know the, you know, uh, narrative mentions three loading bays. Uh, but we actually.
Uh, the drawing has four.
Yeah, that's the, the most recent responses for it, yeah.
So you're going to have four loading bays.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
One mean one is smaller than the others, but.
Okay, so I'll start that last sentence over because it threw me off. The five point zero five acre property contains two warehouse buildings, a workshop building, a partially paved driveway, work yard, and two above ground propane tanks. The application was discussed at a September second planning board meeting and pro- and provided a, they provided a response to the planning board and staff review comments on September fifth. The planning board held a site visit on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five and discussed the application at the planning board meeting later that evening. The applicant submitted to an application for site plan review to the planning board. The applicant is subject to the general performance standards of section five, the site plan reviews standards of section ten, and the performance standards specific to the BI District section six point six point five. Findings of fact and conclusion. The applicant is Southern Maine Marine. The owner is KPT Marine LLC DBA Southern Maine Marine. The location is twenty-four sixty-one Portland Road. Zoning is Business Office Park Industrial District BI. The existing land use is professional office retail and the proposed land use is professional office retail. The planning board has determined that the application to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in the performance standards specific to the BI District section six point six five and the performance, the general performance standards, section five, and the site plan review standards in section ten of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Please see specific findings of fact and the questions and the conclusions of law below. Zoning office. No, don't need that one. We will skip through the sections five and go to page five. Section ten point six four, site plan criteria for approval. It is our practice to vote on each one of these individually. The other three, the other three sections that are referenced are things that you have to do anyway. These are things that could conceivably be waived. But we usually vote on all of them, uh, to make the determination. And should you fail any one of them, the permit itself will fail. So, ten point six point four. Site plan criteria. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. Finding sections five and nine of the land use ordinance is reviewed above.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to approve item number one, ten point six point four. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is, I, I gotta count. Nope. They would, they would not be voting on this because they weren't here for any of the discussion.
Right.
So four in favor, two abstaining. Item number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. The applicant should note any federal or state permits that may be required. Well, there were none, I believe. There were none required. Okay.
Uh, move to approve.
Do we have to approve that? None required? Oh, I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
It is unanimous. Section, number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the site, to the project site and the neighborhood.
Move to approve. Oh, sorry.
The applicant has received a review from the Arundel Fire Department.
Okay, now I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Susan, seconded by Tom to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. The proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality or of surface or groundwater findings. The proposed development is not anticipated to impact the quality or surface of groundwater resources.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Susan to approve number four. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number five. The project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff during the site, from the site during a twenty-five year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. The proposed development is not anticipated to in, increase peak runoff from the site.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Susan. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. The proposed development will not have an adverse onsite or offsite impact for vehicle, the vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems based on the provided trip generation analysis.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Tom to approve number six. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments or the community. The proposed development will not have an adverse impact upon the environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments or the community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion by Tom, seconded by Susan to approve number seven. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number eight. The proposed project will produce, will not produce noise, odor, dust, debris, glare, solar obstructions, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. The proposed development will not produce anything that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Susan to approve number eight. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. The applicant will need to provide a capacity letter noting that the site is properly serviced by public water.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Tom. Any discussion?
Will, will this become, uh, since we don't have that in hand, will it become a condition?
Yes.
At the end, or, or is this, this covers it?
No, I believe we have it mentioned in the conditions as well.
Okay, thank you. Great.
Okay, all those in favor of number nine?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number ten, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. The proposed application is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Susan to approve number ten. Any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the site plan application of KPT Marine LLC as herein presented. Recommended motion approval and conditions on the basis of the application, plans, reports, and about the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board
Approves.
Approves the proposed site plan application of KPT Marine LLC at twenty-four sixty-one Portland Road with the following conditions of approval. Prior to applying for building permits, the application shall submit an updated landscaping plan for review and approval by the town planner and codes enforcement officer based on comments in this document and at the October seventh, two thousand twenty-five Arundel Planning Board meeting. Item number two, prior to applying for a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit documentation demonstrating the proposed use has adequate public water capacity. Item number three. Prior to the issuance of any building permits, a performance guarantee determined by the town planner and the applicant will be presented uh, to the town. No permits will be issued until the performance guarantee has been received.
Well.
Yeah, it's not in there.
Okay. So you did a good job. Now. So, a motion to approve.
Yes, I do.
I'll need that after.
Okay.
Oh, we don't need a new motion.
No, we don't need any motion. We don't need a new motion. We started. But I will.
Here are all the conditions.
I will, so. I will give this to you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Yes, sir.
Just one note. After your approval, sections on page two. Right under the chart, it's a section six six five, acquire specific performance standards for the Gateway District. That's the BI District, isn't it?
Oh, good catch.
Yeah, that's just. It should be. Thank you.
No, I know. I'm a nuke, so. That's fine. I'm with you. I didn't catch that, but I'm with you.
Okay, and we, we, we've already said all those in favor. We'll have this.
Do we need to sign a copy of this tonight?
No, we're going to have to sign a new copy, which will be available.
We have copies of the final plans, but they need to update them with the conditions. So they'll be at the town office for you to sign.
Yeah. Congratulations, gentlemen.
You're all set.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And item number two on the new business, Branch Brook Fuels Incorporated. Conditionally use revision, a proposed revision to add a thirty thousand gallon propane storage tank at the existing fuel storage and distribution location. All required state permits have been obtained by the applicant. The parcel is located at fourteen Old Saw Mill Lane on tax map thirty-six lot fifteen in the DB two zone. The, the property owner is DNR Leasing Company Incorporated, and the applicant is John Hughes.
Good night.
Good night.
Hey.
Good evening. Hi, guys.
So.
Take it away.
Take it away. I don't have a canned performance for you all. I, um, assume you've received some information from Charles.
Yes.
Um, some of it I don't think really conveys what it is we're doing or what we have done in the past because it surrounds our oil vault plant more so than propane. Uh, we're adding a tank to the propane facility. And a lot of the questions that were brought up here, I don't know if that was forwarded to you folks after the fact or not. But the plan that we're amended, seeking to amend, was approved in twenty fifteen. Um, and it was, uh.
That's when we put in the last, uh, tank, correct?
What's that?
That was.
That was when the first tank was put in.
The first, yes.
Yeah. And that one has drainage, landscape plans, parking, a lot of the things that were brought up in the emails that I received um, are on that plan by Pinkham and Greer from twenty, actually twenty twelve was when Steve drew it. Um, and that one, I believe, is on file at the town office as well. I brought small copies for everybody if you're interested in taking a look at it. Uh, and I can provide a combination of all three of them, or however you'd like it conveyed going forward. Uh, but the, the oil plant is a finished project from twenty eighteen, and I'm not seeking any changes there at all.
And I think the, the, the one drawback that we have, we have to have a public hearing on that. We can have that at the next meeting.
Yeah.
But we have to have the public hearing.
So I wasn't around back then.
Okay.
I'm going to ask some dumb questions.
Sure, no, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you're not changing the groundwork at all?
Not at all. We're going to dig two four foot wide by ten foot holes, three feet deep.
Yeah.
Because I know ledges at three feet. And pour our new footings, add a tank right beside the one that's there. Um, it's pretty common that most people in our business have two tanks.
Um, with the consolidation in our market in the last four or five years, thankfully, our business has grown.
And in order to operate safely and to be able to get trucks unloaded and loaded in a timely fashion, um, we decided that we would add another tank to the plant.
So you have a propane tank there now?
Uh, there is one there now. That's correct. It's been there since twenty fifteen. Yeah. No, no, I, I've just.
Through it today and I didn't see that.
Sure, no, and like I say, I've got copies here if you're interested in looking at them.
And, and so the groundwork isn't changing. You don't, you're not changing any drainage or any of those.
Not at all.
You're just parking one.
Parking one next to the other one. There's no electric, no additional electrical, um, no additional, um, requirements at all. Basically, there's a ninety in the piping.
Yeah.
It's going to be cut out and replaced with a T. And it's going to go over and tie that one together. And when you fill one, you fill both.
Right.
And, uh, so they're tied together all the time. And that's all there is to it.
Yeah.
It's, uh, we've received state permits. I've been in touch with the fire chief.
Yep, well, I saw that.
Yeah, and also one thing that really wasn't conveyed in there is the state has to come back and re-inspect once the project is finished before you can put any product in it. So if there's any shortcuts or anything that's overlooked, they inspect it again before we even put it into service.
Yep.
So I have another stupid question. Oh, not that his question is stupid. I, mine probably is. Sorry, Paul, I didn't mean that.
No, no, why?
So are trucks able to refuel from both of the tanks or is there only one area?
There's only an area to load a truck. You can only load one truck at a time to go out and make deliveries. Um, and then that same spot is where we offload a trailer truck full.
So there's a host tank. So there's a host tank, and then there's the ancillary tank next to it, but you don't.
They draw together.
Propane from both tanks.
They draw together, they stay the same level.
Right. So if you wanna fill up your truck, you fill up to one spot.
Yeah, you pull up, you back up to one spot and it pulls them both down equally. Yeah.
And you don't have two lines coming off that you can.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
No, 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 that's, that's the little piping change they're gonna make.
To the right and the other one's left and they're both gonna fuel.
Correct.
Yep.
Alright, if we do a sight walk, you can see where it is.
Yeah. I have a question, I, I was there.
Yeah, you were.
Did a good job, but um, I, I didn't, I don't have the old plans, but there was no, uh, like foresight of, of, of making a pad for a second addition, this is, this will all be, um.
Oh, nothing done in advance, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing, we laid everything out, any, anytime these guys build something, they build it to be added to. Because the minority of these are a single tank, unless there's something way out in a rural location where they're not serving very many customers. But in this type of application, um, typically two thirty thousand gallon tanks is what you have.
Yeah.
Um.
Good, good, so.
But no, nothing's been done at all right now, it's all still balloted off and as it was when we completed it in twenty fifteen.
As far as the site work goes, this is pretty clean, pretty simple, it's, it's. Yeah.
Yeah, no, the, um, the contractor that's doing the work actually does the actual concrete work because he is just perfect at it, he has one trailer with all the forms, he ta, he makes the same form every single time. So they come out very nice and the structural integrity is nice, so all we have to do is provide him with, I know from experience from doing this last tank, we're gonna dig down about three feet and hit rock, and then we'll drill and pin, and then they take it from there.
Good.
Charles? Yeah, um. Nice to meet you in person.
Yep.
Um, I'll just clarify for the planning board that, um, this is being reviewed, the, it, in the, in the, according to the ordinance, the fees for an application are set, um, by the, the Board of Selectmen. Um, in Arundel, you have a straight up, a regular application fee and also a revision fee. Uh, so we're reviewing this kind of as a, technically like a site plan amendment, but in the ordinance, there is no site plan amendment process, similar to how, as Rich alluded to before, uh, there's no, uh, one hearing, you can't do this in one meeting, uh, so there's a process, and there's only one kind of review criteria. And a lot of the comments in the memo, uh, while some of the background information might not be fully uh, accurate in terms of, you know, which year, the twenty fifteen plan, twenty seventeen, well, North Star and the reviewers were looking at the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen approvals, as it was the most recent approval on the site that shows, you know, everything. Um, while the twenty fifteen is focused on the propane, the actual site work, the parcel includes, unless I'm wrong, that it's a different parcel. Um, but that part, um, so we want, we're looking, we were trying to review the plans that were the most recent, most updated. Uh, and a lot of the comments in the memo, and again, while we agree, this is a small, I fully agree with you, this is a small propane project. Um, we, uh, just need a certain, a few things that are required in the ordinance, and they are laid out plain and clear in the memo. Uh, normally, these are things that should be submitted before an application is even accepted by the town. Um, but given how the, the, how small scale this is, we felt it would be better to, and more, and faster to bring it to the board to accept and then schedule a public hearing so we can get this forward, rather than wait for the applicant to submit everything, similar to how we just conditioned something. I expect something similar with this so we can get this work, you know, started in effort, so I would say that the memo itself is accurate and reflects the, uh, kind of the situation we're looking at. Um, it, it, I would boil it down to not clear, there's no clear amendment procedure in the ordinance in Arundel. So we do have to treat this like a normal site plan application, so a plenary site plan review, um, which is section ten-five-two and below in the ordinance for those who are new.
From my point of view, that was kinda confusing because I basically laid my project at the feet of the town and said, what do I do? And it started out when I talked, um, can't remember if it was Ann or someone at North Star, they said that it was gonna be an amendment to an existing plan. So I may not have the right terminology there, and then when I started back talking with Sam, um, she said, no, it would be a full-blown review. And then it bounced back to an amendment of an existing plan. And I ended up paying a fee associated with that, I think it's only two hundred bucks instead of seven hundred bucks. So, ah, I don't really care how it goes, I just wanted to go smoothly and get the work done. Um, there seems to be, you know, that's why I wanted to get back to this, because this plan answers these questions. And I have no intention of making any changes, one of the things with landscaping in this project, and the fire chief will tell you, if there was ever an emergency on site, the first thing they do is set up two monitors so that they got water spraying on that tank from two directions at once. If we put a bunch of trees around it to hide it, you're not gonna get the water on the tank. So there has to be a certain level of functionality here, and when we did the original plan here, we did do some trees and some grass islands which are there and ten years bigger than they were back then. Um, but adding more landscaping, I was confused as to what you might want me to do there um, to comply with.
I would, I would say give us the landscaping the way it is right now.
Okay, that's the way it is, in fact, we just prettyed it all up after twenty-seven years of being there, we cleaned ditches and planted a bunch of grass this year, and if you do do a sight walk, you'll be happy with the way it looks.
Out here in, in fifteen or sixteen, you know, we, there was a discussion about how the water would flow across the the driveway and down, down along the side where there's you've got your neighbor on the side and it was like a little drainage ditch.
There is a, there is a ditch there, we re-rocked that because it had gotten to the point from plowing the yard back there, still gravel.
Yep.
So it had got, eventually started to get filled up, so we scooped it back out, put new riprap in, mulched the sides and get it all presentable again, get rid of the weeds. Um, but other than that, I'm not sure, if you do a sight walk and you want me to do some sort of trees, name it, we'll do it, I love trees.
So I have a question, Charles, I was a little confused, um. So for the sake of expediency, there are some line items that haven't been satisfied yet in the application, but in order to get this thing moving forward, we're gonna, um, put those on the back burner and the applicant is going to know what those line items are and that they will need to be satisfied before the application is granted.
Right.
So does the applicant know, in addition to landscaping, what those other uh, requirements are, and is it spelled out in a document so that there's no confusion? Um, because I certainly, uh, don't know what they are.
Yeah, the, the memo, so I, I spoke with the applicant last week, I tried to express some of these things, but I figured I just put it in a memo, which is the memo you guys have in front of you today, um, and it's one that says updated ten-one, just to be clear, we're all looking at the same document. Um, there's, I'm not saying, there's no specifics about, you know, which trees, I don't, I'm not asking for a tree next to propane tank. Um, one of the submission requirements is simply a landscape plan. And what he sent over last week was the landscaping plan from the twenty fifteen approval, which is helpful, but it doesn't show the existing conditions of the site. And that's what I was explaining to the applicant last week, that we need to see, uh, the, the four oil tanks that are there, those need to be, those are part of the site. They need to be on the site plan, we need to see the two tanks on there as well, on the landscaping plan. Uh, we need to see the striped, the striping, I walked over to the site today, there's no striping today for the, for the parking stalls.
The striping has been contracted to do.
Yeah, that's.
We built the building in nineteen ninety-eight, there were no standards for striping or anything. And up until about seven years ago, that was dirt driveway. So there was no opportunity to do the type of striping.
Right.
Um, and there are twenty-one parking spots for employees and customers on site. We seldom have more than two or three customers in the lobby at any given time. Um, so I think twenty-one is pretty good.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm not.
Added an additional four at the end of the island that aren't on this drawing even because we, um, extended the grass.
Right.
A little prettier.
And, and I think what our intention is with this memo is to kind of cover for some of our issues at, at North Star over the summer in terms of sharing you information, cause Ben did give you the wrong information about number of hearings cause he wasn't, he was filling in, he wasn't familiar with the Arundel process. Um, so we're, we're doing this in a way where we're trying to keep this moving forward while addressing these changes. And it's really just having these documents so that the planning board can approve it, it's really just updating those documents that you have. Um, and putting, if you're not changing anything to the erosion control plan, then you're just adding a propane, a second propane tank to that plan with showing the full site as is, I walked over to landscaping, looks great, but we don't, we simply do not have a landscaping plan. That is something that the planning board can waive, but it is over, just a raw requirement of the ordinance.
So I hate to be a translator, but I think what he's saying is he wants to see it on the plan, what you're proposing and how it's gonna look when you're done. So.
I was so up in the air on what was wanted, what was required. I have a plan that shows twenty fifteen landscaping, the only thing, do the sight walk and look, the trees have gotten bigger, nothing's changed. Um, I can have Scott McDonald transfer this, I assume that after tonight's meeting, we would agree on what all we were doing and prevent me from having to do.
Right, and I, and I think that's a good suggestion.
So, um, I'd like to be able to put the old twenty fifteen plan.
And augment it.
Together with the one that Scott McDonald originally drew for this board that shows the tank next to the other tank. And then also, I had him amend that already because there was a concern about where the safety signs were going to go. So I asked him to do that the other day for me, um, so I assumed that.
And he could put the striping in, on the.
I, I was sick all afternoon, uh, my son, my son was there, they might have even sprayed it this afternoon.
No, no, what I'm saying is you can just draw it in, you're.
It's on the plan.
Okay.
It's right here. That's why I was reminded.
Yeah, yeah.
Give you guys copies of this, I didn't know what was allowed. But, um, this is why I was so adamant of this plan being conveyed to the board, there's the parking. Um, there's a lot of stuff that Steve put into this plan originally that wasn't on Scott's because we were, I, again, Ben told me, we were amending an existing plan. So I just did a simple, here's the building, here's the ball plant, here's the extra tank.
Yeah.
Game over.
Yeah.
I can take this and augment it with that, and.
I think that's, that would do it.
Get everybody what they.
Yeah, I think that Charles just wants to see it all in one place.
He, I think he's got some concerns.
Okay, well, that's what we're trying to clarify right now.
Let me just see this one. Yeah, this only has one propane tank on it. I, 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 I think what Susan, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, what Susan is saying is exactly what, I'm looking at the memo right now, and it's and forgive me if I'm wrong, the memo I sent over on October first, um, appears, it seems pretty clear what we need. Um, and it's really just to get this plan, cause even this plan, it's stamped October twenty-ninth, twenty-twelve. It's a thirteen-year-old plan, and I think it's just understanding what the, uh, amendment site plan, it's not um, we need updated plans that show that it's such a simple fix, it's not, it's.
Simple, all they have me to do it.
Yes. And even.
I have the luxury of having my surveyor as one of my tenants.
Perfect.
Change this.
Yep.
Um, so I can do whatever you wanna do, I just don't wanna burden him with half a dozen revisions to something that seems quite simple. Um, but I assumed that after tonight's meeting, we could basically combine the three drawings, this one the back page, which is the sign concerns.
Yes.
Um.
And you said that, yep.
Um, and then his first plan that we submitted in the application, that just basically shows you know, very simple, a couple of tanks.
Yep.
We're off and running. Um, and I assume we just make that into one plan so that everybody can use that as a reference.
Right.
And then.
Right, so you'll have a current plan.
Definitely.
That is kind of evolved.
Again, it's the fusion game, me, um, as far as, um, amendment to a plan, I, I didn't understand it, I'm the propane guy, not the planning guy. I, last time we did this in twenty eighteen, I, I used Saint Germain and Associates and I was very pleased with the results because I could just sit in the back row with a smile.
Yep.
Um, this plan, everybody I talked to said, you don't need that, this, that's an unnecessary expense, you should be able to do this on your own. It's been quite frustrating, and I know North Star has had some, you know, issues with help and so forth, but I had on again, up again, on again.
Yep.
Thing here, and I mean, the fees are, if there's no such thing as an amendment, why is there two fees? Why did I pay two hundred bucks instead of seven hundred bucks? Why did Ann Tarr tell me that this, it would be an amendment, she was one of my cheerleaders, that she said, bring it before the board and just tell them what you're gonna do, show it to them, have Scotty draw it, and we'll be good to go.
Well, she and I had the discussion and we can't, you can't change the plan without having an amendment. We couldn't just say, yeah, go ahead, put this on a piece of paper, so we have to do the amended, uh, and she mentioned.
Money for this, huh? This whole long review is seven hundred bucks. And I came with a check to write out with the seven hundred bucks and she told me, no, no, this is an amendment, it's two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you already pay it at two hundred dollars?
Yeah.
I think that should cover it.
If you want to.
This isn't the whole use, the whole business, it's just amending.
If you wanna give your money away, I'm sure we could.
No, starting at this end, you wanna start at this end, right?
Right.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, we start to file.
Charles? Yeah, I, I just wanna clarify, that is the core of the issue, is what he's saying is why is there a fee? If there's no process for an amendment, and I wholly agree with that, I think that's something that is, you know, there's always something that uh, uh, an application, a matter that creates change, I think for Arundel, it would be helpful to have an amendment procedure for applications just like this.
And I agree, we're gonna, and, and I, I was gonna talk with you and, and Sam about working that out because we don't have it and we have no control over the fee structure.
Oh, okay.
That is.
No, that's just like.
Up to the select.
I'm learning.
I didn't even know how much it costs.
I didn't.
I would know.
Yeah, and I think what we're being, doing here is being as flexible as the ordinance allows.
Yep.
Um, not requiring a, you know, complete full submission. Um, you know, we're not, I don't think we're gonna be looking for an engineer review of the ESC plan. We're not asking for a stormwater management plan because there's no impact really to the site, I walked over today and it's gonna be hardly gonna impact it. Um, but really asking for the landscape pan, plan and the ESC plan, the erosion and soil control plan are really the bare minimum just for the town state of having that approved. Um, and then those are just, if, having the twenty fifteen plans, which we did not have to look at, um, cause it would have just been like, put the second propane tank on it, that is generally it. I walked over today and, you know, the landscaping's all there, really good stormwater control on it, so very clean site.
I see.
Yes.
Do you have an erosion and sediment control plan?
If you told me what it was, I could probably tell you, uh, that plan said that it's an erosion and sediment control.
Okay, alright.
Um, I was actually wondering about. Do I need to hire an engineer now because you have to have special alternatives in order to do that? That plan has a typo, it shows which way the water runs. I know the driveway doesn't wash out every day.
I planted on the original, on the fifteen and two thousand seventeen plan, I'm sorry. I'm done.
I was trying to answer this question, that's why I'd asked you originally, are you doing a lot of groundwork or any of that? If you're not disturbing any of it, it still applies.
Yeah, but.
Nothing's changed since you've done it, and it was approved, so you shouldn't have to redo.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what I needed to do, cause I gotta go.
I just didn't want this to make you have.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
Additional.
You, so you're gonna bring in a new set of, a new set, correct?
I'll do a complete set that basically takes the back page of that packet, the front page of that packet, and the plan that you guys already have that came with the application, which is basically the back page with no notes about signs. Um, and combine them onto one, if that'll do the trick.
Gonna have Scott do that for you?
Probably, if he has the time.
Tell, tell him we need a signature box that's gonna, that's gonna hold seven signatures for the.
Oh, can you not do a big enough one?
Oh, no, this, this one was from the staff review, which is no longer.
That's, that's Steve Stern's of twenty twelve.
Right.
Um, if you look at the other plan that came with the application, um, Scott did put a signature block on that one.
The last page.
Right here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's on that one as well.
Yep.
So I've got another one for you here. How are you gonna confirm the existing and new tanks will be managed and supervised to prevent toxic and noxious discharges outside of normal condition? Cause that's what this said you're gonna do too.
Because that's what this said you're going to do too. Is that really something that?
We have a lot of the state.
Let me show you.
I don't need to see it.
No, no, I'm sure, I cannot tell you as well as, there's, there's too much to it.
Well, tough.
I'm not going to throw a card over it.
Exactly.
Every one of these facilities has to have one of these done by a safety analysis. This is the one for that existing tank.
Yep.
Um, Crown Energy, this got all my notes. Safety analysis, but that's our hook that we keep at the shop. I figured, and there's all the questions on how we operate it. And what we do.
Say you need it.
Um, to make it all run. And I have the second one of those, it looks just like that, only it has to do with the tank that sits next to it from Crown Energy. Um, that shows that, how that's going to be operated. Um. So.
Cool. So a lot of this stuff is, I'm going to continue to do it. In accordance with the requirements.
Here, yeah, and we also have for the oil plant, we have what they call an SBCC plan that's on file. That also has protocols and things that we do. Um, my son and I are both, um, propane first responder trained at the Spelfire Academy. Um, in Massachusetts, we get updated every two years. Um, we're both licensed plant operators of the state of Maine. Um. Like I said, I'd have to get the whiteboard to show you. I'm going to do it every application.
It sounds like you're pretty much there.
And I know everything. I learn something new every day, as I am today.
Me too.
Well, I think the only, the only discussion that we have, that I think that we need at this point is whether or not we're going to have a sidewalk.
Well, we, we need to have, we should have one.
We should have one, yeah.
I agree, so let's schedule.
Cause I, I was looking at it, you know, the plenary plan says that we can, we can waive it. I don't think we've ever waived it.
So when can we have it so that we can have a public hearing at the same?
That would be the ne- the next meeting.
Yeah.
If we have a sidewalk.
Before the next meeting.
At six P M. And then at, at seven P M, we can have the, have a public hearing.
Oh, do it before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're running that daylight that time of day too, so.
Yeah, we'll.
Sixty be okay, I think, yeah.
We've got lights on the property.
Oh, yeah, some.
No new lights.
I'll just hand out headlights there.
So what date is that?
It's a Tuesday.
I know, but what's the date in the calendar for the sidewalk?
Twenty first.
Yeah, twenty first, day, day seven.
Twenty first.
Okay. Uh, the twenty first.
So we can, we can do the sidewalk. Okay, so, well. Let me raise this question for you. Do we have a complete application? The town planner says we have a complete application so we can actually schedule. We'll have to vote that the application is complete, but then we can schedule a public hearing for two weeks from now.
Yeah, very question.
On the application, we have a lot of things that do not apply. I, I have no issues with that based on what they're doing. Just want to make sure there isn't something that'll come back and bite later or that he's got to come back.
Those are.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I would say that the, the memo kind of speaks to a lot of things we need. Um, but in terms to keep this moving forward and so that, you know, we're not making him come back for multiple meetings that are necessary. Um, just.
Oh, I'm good with that.
I'm happy to work with the applet to figure out exactly what we need, but.
I want to make sure we all run into something down the road and throw the monkey wrench into it, that's all.
In that case, I, I will deem this complete, is the application complete.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to deem the application uh complete. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
Yeah, right, sidewalk, over six o'clock.
Well, yeah.
Oh, did anybody make a motion yet?
Not yet. I'll make a motion, we perform sidewalk, uh, the twenty first and.
Six.
Yeah.
Second.
Mo- motion by Paul Green, seconded by, was that you, Scott?
Yeah.
Seconded by Scott to have the sidewalk, October sixteenth.
At six P M.
At, at six P M, but it's, I, I'm sorry, it's October twenty first. At, at six P M. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you.
And the public hearing. I make a motion, we hold a public hearing on October twenty first at seven P M.
I'll second that.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Roth to have a public hearing on October twenty first at seven P M. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We'll see you then.
Very good. See you on the twenty first.
And everything that night. If, if everything is done that night.
I'll lean on Scott, see what I can do.
If you want to, we can chat tomorrow, so exactly what you need to make sure that it's ready for the meeting.
Oh, as far as what's included?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the memos you're talking about is that email I have here that talks about plant safety plan.
Yeah, and we can, I'll, I'll, we should go through it together just to make sure we're on.
Yeah, that's no problem. Um, we'll get that done and then uh. I'll get on Scott's list.
Perfect.
And he should, I can't imagine he couldn't get it done. It, it depends on where he's traveling.
Yeah.
He surveyed, but he surveys the like giant pipeline projects and stuff, so he's in Texas and Georgia. So sometimes, some weeks, it's hard to nail it down.
Yeah, we'll figure something out.
Tell him to bring his computer, he can email.
Alright, very good.
Thanks. Hi, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of other things that we have to discuss. Not the least of which is that our meetings in the month of November are kerfuffled. On the fourth, it's election day, and on the eleventh, it's Veterans Day. Veterans Day is a holiday. Town Hall is closed. Good for Town Hall.
What's the regular schedule? Would be the fourth?
It would be the, the fourth, uh, the eighth, the fourth and the eighteenth. We can make the eighteenth, but we're having a problem having another meeting.
And the week after would be Thanksgiving.
The week after is Thanksgiving.
Right, so I won't, I'm leaving, so I won't be here after the fifteenth. Are you going west?
No.
Your home.
So we can, we could have the, we could have a meeting, I want to say. Look at this calendar. It's Thanksgiving. The twenty seventh or the twenty? Well, we have one on the, we have one on the eighteenth. Yeah, so we could do the eighteenth, right? Yeah, we can do, I, I'm assuming we can, that's a regular meeting, we should be able to do the eighteenth.
Right.
We could have one earlier, we could do something like on the, the sixth or the seventh. Or the thirteenth or fourteenth, but the thirteenth, fourteenth would be kind of close to the eighteenth, but. So, my, if I can make a suggestion.
Sure.
Uh, by the next meeting, we'll know if there'll be anything coming up on the agenda. Right?
Yeah.
We can address it at that point, whether we need.
November meeting.
Right?
Yeah.
Instead of the fourth, if we have the whole one that week based on what comes up on the agenda, and if not, it's not pressing, we can take it up on the eighteenth.
Yeah, I, I would, I would echo that and say that's a good approach. Off the top of my head, I think there's only one. Well, there's only one item for November right now that I can think of, but we have a couple, I think, two or three projects that are kind of in that limbo section of revising their plans. So if they resubmit it, we might do that, but I think one longer meeting, um, they're all small projects anyway, so I think it would be quick. So I think one meeting is certainly feasible for Thanksgiving, for Thanksgiving, for November.
Okay.
It's a good suggestion.
We can do it. That'll make Anne happy. So she just doesn't know how to go about posting what we're doing. Yeah, so we need to let her know about the uh. Both the sidewalk and the public hearing, right? You're going to do that, Paul?
I can.
Okay, yeah, I get, I've got to go out of town tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Alright.
That will work.
Good.
Is there anything else that we need? You get a chance, say hi to the new board members?
Awesome.
Hopefully we need to get in, right? Have you, have you guys signed up the, have you signed up for the training? I thought we only Charles, but it's good to see you back. Did you sign up for the training yet?
Me?
Yeah, both of you.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I know Anne had sent out a, a memo about it.
Does it really go four hours? Does it really go four hours?
Sadly, yes.
Unfortunately. That put that on the record, unfortunately.
Four hours on a Zoom meeting.
It's, it's thorough.
Okay, okay.
I've, I've.
I gotta figure out how to do a Zoom meeting.
I've been to seminar, seminars on Zoom meetings that take eight hours. It's, it's, I can't sit there that long, I keep getting up and leaving.
Put it on silent, put it on silent.
You can't put it on silent, the ones I go to are all muted by the host.
Like the older book or something, right, right there.
I just gotta go.
Looks like you're. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is, I heard that. We are adjourned at eight oh four. That's it, don't even second, once you make it, that's it, you're done.